July 25th, 2018, Heinsberg Planting Commission meeting order. So, first order of business is agenda changes? Anyone have a change in agenda they want to put forward?
I just have a couple more correspondence items at the end of the meeting. I think, I think I emailed you folks, but it wasn't on the agenda. Williston Town Plan and the Vermont Electric Co-op Battery Station.
Okay, we'll move on to number two. Public comments for non-agenda items. No one in the audience tonight, so we'll move quickly on to item three. Official map revisions. Discuss our walk on July 11th. What we saw, what we thought. Discuss locations for and proposed uses for community facilities. Sure the map can help us out with that. And review the second draft of the map. Alright.
So what did you see?
Dead people, Alex.
Very beautiful.
I think the one thing that stuck out the most to me is we had, we had marked out the field on the west side of Mechanicsville Road as a potential for public use in the future.
We talked about the west, I'd shown it on the west side and I think more of you thought it ought to be on the east side.
Yeah, and, and just walking that area, I think reinforced that for me.
Oh, okay.
Because, number one, it's a, it's a big step down from the sidewalk to, you know, any of that property looks a little wet. Doesn't really look like a place where people would want to hang. So I, I really couldn't see stuff there. If you wanted to put, just put a bench there, I think there's a lot of work to do and it's really sunny. There is no cover.
Right, that was what Maggie was raising last time, or the time before last, that having a bench there with some plantings that would eventually provide shade would be nice. But you're right, there's an awful lot of fill that would have to be placed to make that possible. So, before you go too far into what the other three folks saw, or other things you saw, Joe, did you walk basically the Mechanicsville Road corridor from here? Okay.
To the cemetery.
To the cemetery.
Up in the cemetery and back the same way.
Got it. So what else did you see and/or think or react to?
I think that the general sense of the group was that somehow, I guess what you have shown here on this draft, that further north on the Mechanicsville Road, that through that large piece of open land, if that ever gets developed, that there'd be some kind of walking path right of way that could link up to the trail network, you know, that you find further south towards Thistle Hill and behind the town. That was sort of a fairly concrete discussion, I think. You know, if there's lots of development in there, to be able to link into the trail network directly from there seemed like a...
Makes a, makes sense.
Yeah, and there seemed to be some sort of natural waterways, even though they weren't particularly active at the moment, that could shape a route.
And depending, you know, depending, after talking with the Trails Committee, you know, maybe like a wood, having a wooded park up, up there by the trails, as I understand it.
Oh, so like, if you're looking at the Quinn property on the east side of Mechanicsville Road, there's the meadow that climbs up the hill.
Yeah.
And then, at the edge of the meadow, which you can't really see from the road too well, but it turns into woods, and then the property extends to the east, and, and there's a fair amount of woods, you're thinking that if there were a trail connection, that perhaps there could be a community space up there in the woods.
Well, it's interesting with the, with the community facilities, because really, it's the kind of thing where we say we want X, you know, we want a park of X size, and it would be a discussion with the developer about where best to put that, to have access, trail access, road access. So, but we need to put an actual, you know, colored block on the map. But I guess we've talked about that, how it, you know, that can change.
Yeah, I think both you and John at the June 27th meeting, I was rereading the minutes this afternoon, liked the idea, especially in this property, of maybe trying to indicate that the, that the community facility could float within, within the property. We show it here, but it, it really could float, and as long as we describe what it is and what we want it to do. So I, I mean, we can look into that and see if whether, you know, putting that sort of flexibility on the official map is, passes legal muster with our, our council. What else did you see on the walk, or think, or observe?
Traffic goes too fast.
Did you stop at the Lot 15 where the Hannaford is proposed? We had, I had put a, the old official map shows that whole lot as a community facility, and the first draft I showed a smaller piece of that near the post office. Did you, did you stop and take a peek on the canal walk?
Yep.
Any, any thoughts or observations? We had some discussion at the June 27th meeting, but I don't know if you saw anything else that was worthy of note?
The setback still needs to be big, bigger.
Setback from?
From the canal walk.
The setback to a park, or the setback to any development like a, like a grocery store, or, or something else?
Yeah, because the, the back end of the Hannaford building is, you know, right there. There needs to be some more public, what do we call them, facility, community facility in the village.
You still like the idea of having one in that location, is what you're saying, right?
Yeah. It's a, it's a good location because it's, it's central, it's, you know, there's the potential of mixed-use parking with surrounding, surrounding businesses. It's walkable.
Yeah, that post office parking lot, actually in the bank's parking lot, you know, after five o'clock, they're empty.
Right.
Not, you know, it's private property, nobody has a right to be there necessarily, but the potential for some kind of shared parking, if there are arrangements made, seems pretty good.
And the, and the telecom across the, across the street.
Yeah.
And, you know, central and, and walkable in a way that the library, it is, because it's going to be accessible with sidewalks soon, but it's still quite a, quite a hook height from the center, you know, center of the village.
Sure. Did, did you, it's a pretty flat parcel, there's not a whole lot to distinguish one side from the other, except for what other uses around it, but did you notice anything or think of anything in terms of what portion of it would, would be appropriate for a community park or a facility, if it wasn't the whole thing?
I think, weren't we thinking that, that area closest to the post office, isn't that the high, the highest?
That's definitely the highest. There are wetlands throughout, and there are some wetland areas over there, but there's some non-wetland areas over there as well. I think the largest chunk without wetland constraints might be not there, but actually, I have to look at the wetland donation, I think maybe it's on the northwest side of the parcel, but, okay, I was just curious if you had any thoughts looking at it?
The intersection of the post office and Mechanicsville Road, there's a small piece of property that we looked at, that we thought maybe belongs to the town.
So there is a triangular slice that sits on the east side of the canal, so between the canal and Mechanicsville Road?
Right.
Right at that intersection.
North of the intersection?
South, south of the intersection with Commerce Street.
About west.
North of the intersection is, that property belongs to NezTech.
Okay, that's what we...
So NezTech's property extends, you correct me if I'm wrong, Marie, but I think...
Oh, you're right.
Their property extends across the canal, from their building across, and has a little bit of frontage on Mechanicsville.
We're trying to figure out who maintained that, because it was...
They do. The other one on the, the south, it was given to the town by the Giroux's, I think. Seems to me like, I want to say a few years ago, but my age, time flies.
Add twenty.
Right. It took a long time for it to happen too, but it's, has happened in the last 28 years. But it's just a little triangular shaped piece of land, but...
Yeah, but that part, that part to the north, where there's a bench and sort of a really attractive, you know, place to sit and get some shade?
Yeah.
That, that's all on the NezTech property.
I think. But the other one could be too, maybe if it had some more trees or something, right? It's all about the trees.
Yeah, I mean, I think what really makes the, that NezTech corner bench so nice now is the landscaping for sure, that's the most important thing with the bench. But the fact that the new sidewalk that got built goes right in, in front of it, it sort of feels like a place you're supposed to be.
Does.
Whereas the little sliver of land on the south side of the intersection.
Bear.
There's nothing there to, there's no sidewalk, there's...
Correct.
It's just, it's just a nice grassy patch with some trees and the canal.
Refresh my memory, is there a bench there of any kind?
Yes, uh-huh, on the NezTech side.
Yeah, but what about on the south?
No.
Yes, there is.
There's no sidewalk.
There's a bench?
It faces south.
Is it?
I'm not sure it's on that piece of property we're talking about, though.
Yeah.
I think it, I'm not sure who owns what you're talking about, but I don't think it's the little strip that we're talking about. The triangular shape, I don't think the bench is really on that. I know what Barbara's saying.
I can bring up on that.
I'm not sure who owns it, though.
The bench?
The bench, or the, no, the bench was put in by some CVU students, wasn't it, as a part of a graduation?
I don't know.
I think we may be talking about a different place. Let me bring a map up and we'll, we'll get on the same page.
The bench, I'm thinking of... It's really pretty and true there, though, the canal walk, or whatever you want to call it.
Yeah, it is. The trees have developed nicely.
Unfortunately, I don't see many people doing it anymore. It used to seem like there were a lot.
There's somebody there every day.
Is there?
Did you see any, yeah, you saw people when you were out there walking?
Good. I don't necessarily go at the time you went. But did the daytime though?
Any time of day, there's been people walking dogs, kids. Yeah, gets used a lot.
I would say, in talking about Lot 15, that the, well, as comparison with, say, that point F, that other site that had been under discussion, where it felt like it dropped off fairly dramatically, Lot 15 doesn't fall off as dramatically, but it also gives you that sense that it's down from the walkway.
I didn't get the same sense of vertical difference.
So we're... I think the sidewalk construction has really accentuated that from the north.
See that white dot?
That little white rectangle.
That little white dot at the top of the tree.
Get the laser pointer here, so, but yeah, I see what you're talking about now, Barbara, I didn't remember.
Oh, yes, I do, I'm right. Wow, I'm gonna look for that tomorrow.
There's almost no water on the canal, we have to drag our canoe along.
Why is it that bad? So dry right now.
There's the bench, right?
Yeah. Wait, I don't, it's funny, I drive by that every day and don't notice. But the other one, I always notice.
Right, this one really does seem to stand out.
Yeah, you're right, Alex.
Just a tiny feature, too.
It almost looks like people are sitting there waiting for the bus to stop or something. That's what I always think. Is there a bus coming?
What about the land between telecom and the other shops?
Yeah, I'll zoom out so you can see what you're talking about, Dennis.
Across the road?
So, here's, here's telecom.
Yeah.
Here's the Village Center Plaza.
Right.
What's going on with that?
Something's going on, they've got it all staked out.
Yeah, what goes on with that?
Both the telecom and the Blanks, who own the Village Center Plaza, you know, own like, what is another, wants to be another lot. This is the telecom property, and this, you know, really wants to be subdivided and something else there. And similarly, the Village Center Plaza, the Blanks own, this wants to be something too someday.
They have it all staked out now.
Well, so last year, they planted, um...
Wildflowers.
Exactly, it was a big wildflower garden, it was beautiful.
Yes.
And this year, the wildflowers weren't there, but they do have it staked off, and I don't know if they're just experimenting or what.
I think they planted seeds again, wildflowers.
Do you?
Put up the tape to keep people out.
Probably didn't grow, because, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe.
The other lot to the, the telecom one, that's kind of wet.
Yeah, little bit.
Much different than the...
It gets run off from, you know, the residential neighborhood up here, but there's a ditch along here, and anyway. Yeah, there's some infill potential there someday, if those property owners are interested.
It'd be a nice park.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, there you go, Barbara, that's a good idea. Cause it's a little shaded over there, more than the...
Is that where you're going with that, Dennis?
Shopping center one.
Alternate location for a possible centrally located park? I mean, the benefit of...
You wouldn't have to fill it in, I don't think.
The benefit of this one is that it's, it's on this, you know, well-traveled canal path, and next to a pretty high-traffic community facility, in the sense of the post office. But you're right, this one here...
But people are crossing the road all the time, onto the, the little bridge.
Uh-huh.
A lot, that I do notice.
I mean, in that spot, you need another bridge, because the, the walkway's on the other side of the canal, to get there.
There are always people going by there, that you have to stop for.
It's this red button, if you can mind. Is the bridge right there?
Yeah, exactly.
That's the...
The old Turkey Lane Bridge.
Is there any sort of pedestrian gesture right there?
There's a crosswalk.
There's a crosswalk.
Painted on the road.
Painted, okay.
But we have a missing piece of sidewalk along the frontage of that Mechanicsville Road, you know, to the north of that.
But people frequently cross there, that I see.
There's no sidewalk here, the sidewalk goes to...
Goes right to there, yep, and then crosses.
And then you can cross.
And we, we're lacking sidewalk.
But there's nothing on this side.
Yeah, there is that telecom, telecom's...
Is that sidewalk?
That sidewalk. Telecom put in a sidewalk along their entire frontage, but...
Just not the Commerce...
Not the, not the Village Center Plaza.
Village Center.
Well, from the village, it'd be easier to have a crosswalk right here, you wouldn't have to cross Mechanicsville Road.
Where, where, Dennis?
Coming from the village.
If, if the park were on the Village Center's vacant property.
So, this is the NezTech piece you got?
Yep.
And this belongs to another person?
To what used to be the Quinns, but its new name, I don't forget.
No, that one's quite a bit south of the Quinn property.
It used to be Giroux's.
I don't know who, who the owners of that are.
Wait, I'm sorry.
Just north of Commerce Street.
Oh, right, you're right. It's, what's his name? He's in the fire department.
I mean, because the path goes here, this tends to get a little lost, I guess you could say.
Yeah, right.
But, you know, there's great virtue, I think, to these small little nodes where people can sit. It obviously helps if there's some shade, a tree nearby.
It does, and especially along long stretches of...
This could be a great bocce court.
There you go, that's a good one.
The, the problem that I see with that spot is that it's, it's very narrow, the street is almost wider than that is. And so from a, from a pedestrian or person scale standpoint, I, I guess I should just speak for myself, I feel a little overwhelmed in that space by the road and, and...
It slopes a bit.
And, as opposed to a, a, you know, a larger space with more depth to it, that you can get away from the road and...
I still think if it was landscape, and I'm no landscape architect by any means, it would be nicer, if it had some trees.
Yeah.
If it had some trees along the main street.
Yeah, it does, there's a whole row right there.
I just think some small, you know, we're not particularly, not to criticize our town, but, you know, I think that walk along the canal is one of the more pleasing pedestrian spaces in town. But we, we don't go out of our way to consciously create those sorts of spaces very often, and I think awkward little pieces of land can serve that kind of purpose pretty well.
Well, I mean, that's kind of the idea of, you know, Village Northwest, and trying to carve out, you know, a wider area along the road, then you kind of have a linear park to separate walkway from traffic and, you know, give people space.
The beauty of this spot is that we own it, so, if, if the community wanted there to be more interesting space there through landscaping, or bocce court, or whatever.
Public art?
We can, that too, that'd be a good spot for it, we could just do it.
Work with what you have.
Doesn't need to be an official map consideration, I don't think, because we own it and...
What's the possibility of NezTech selling or donating that little square?
That square on the, right, right here?
Well, they've been trying to sell for years.
Yeah, I've never, I've never purged them, I don't know if anybody else has, but they already are, yeah, they're already allowing public use of it. It is, it has been for sale, like Marie said, for a long time, so it is an open question as to if another per, another entity owned that, would, would they seek to do something with that portion, or, or what? I don't know.
I'd be surprised, because it's kind of broken off from the main property.
Right, because of the canal, yeah.
Do you know how big that area actually is, east of the canal?
Sure, I can measure it up for you.
Tiny.
And is it big enough for a dog park?
No, I don't think so.
Yeah.
But I don't know what a dog park needs to be.
Small dogs.
I think it's not, but, yeah, small dogs, little french fries. It's really nice there, though. They had to cut one of the trees on their, on the, their side of the canal, because it died. But it didn't seem to really make a big change.
Uh, roughly point one eight acres.
Mm-hmm, that's a building lot. Could be.
Eight thousand square feet.
I was trying to figure out whether something could reasonably be built there, you know.
It's a pocket park.
No, I meant in terms of a structure, a house, a business.
Two thousand square feet is the minimum size.
Minimum, right.
And that's eight thousand?
Wow, four times.
Although I, I do remember at that meeting, there was some back and forth conversation about that, proposed two thousand, as to maybe that was too small, but yeah.
I think it's too big.
Oh, okay.
Because these small parks that we're talking about, the one that's right there on the corner, I consider that to be a park. That can be ten by twenty, and some benches and landscaping, little bit of shrubbery, some planting with flowers, doesn't take two thousand square feet to do that.
Yeah, well, it's all about what you want the purpose of that facility to be. If you want it to be a place to just sit and get a little shade, then small works. If you want it to be a, what I think of as a true park, where there's room to run around and do, have multiple uses going on at the same time, then, you know, a bump out in the sidewalk is not going to fit that bill. It just depends what you want that space to do.
Well, right now, we only talk about the big park, the runaround park. I'd like to include something that addresses the small parks. I think Maggie herself has said, there's no place in the village to sort of sit quietly under a shady tree and talk with a friend.
Yeah, although it's...
That kind of space.
At the same time, we've...
I know it's night, right next to the road, but people, talk to Will at the, at the public house, and, and he will say, people love sitting outside on the deck, because they can watch the traffic. Wouldn't be something I would choose, but Will's experience is, people like to be where there's activity going on.
I think people do that there on the, on the park bench, John.
I think they do, and I'm just saying we need more of those. We need to define a way to have those kind of places sprinkled around town.
Well, our current regulations call for that, so if you're happy with what the current regs say about small pocket parks, then, great, we can flesh that out and have some more.
I hate the word pocket park, I would never use that, but...
Yeah, well, the wording can be changed. The conversation you had previously was actually in the other direction with regard to another example.
Right.
You talked about the space behind the Bristol Bakery, and how uninviting and unuseful that was, even though it is three times the size of that, and has three times as many benches and ten times as many trees, so, you know...
So it must have something to do with the landscape architecture of it, right?
I don't know.
How it's designed.
I, I think it's partly that, I think it's context, right? I think the reason that, that Will Patton's deck is, is an attractive place to sit and watch the cars go by, is because there's a restaurant attached to it.
You can get alcohol there.
I don't know. He used to own a house right on 116 with a lovely porch, and we still miss it to this day.
Well, what I was gonna, where I was gonna finish was, I think the reason this seems so attractive to all of us is because it's in the public space, and it feels completely in the public space, on a public sidewalk, it's a main pedestrian thoroughfare. Maybe, this, I'm thinking aloud, maybe the space behind the Bristol Bakery isn't, doesn't feel so great to many of us, because it's not either of those things. It doesn't feel like it's part of the public space, it kind of feels like it's part of the, the Kenny Drugs parking lot, and the backyards of some of those apartment houses.
Plus it has an unattractive electric, I don't know what the right word is for it, but the electrical...
The utility boxes and such.
Yes, that's very...
Sure, maybe that's a two...
Unsightly.
Point, Alex, is that, is that beyond having the space, you need something to invite the people in.
Right.
You know, for instance, if, if you were to, to use this, this space, you know, north of Commerce Street, right, more, okay, put more benches in there, well, only so many people walk at once, so you, you quickly exhaust your need to, you know, have more benches for people to rest. You need some other reason for people to be there any length of time in a gather. You know, thinking of, thinking of somebody in, in one of developments, I mean, they're unlikely to call a friend on, on the phone and say, hey, let's, you know, let's go meet in the, in the park north of Commerce Street, you know, just to have a cup of coffee, because there isn't coffee around and there's nothing else to do.
Let's go sit on the park bench. Why not?
I think another observation might be, I'd say all of us, and it speaks more to the creation of these kinds of roadside pedestrian walkways, sidewalks, that when that walkway, you know, as you head further north, sits right adjacent to the road, that's not a pleasant experience, I think you still feel like you're in peril, and you want to get out of there as quickly as you can. Perhaps it's better than nothing, but you're so engaged with the road that it completely defeats the purpose of having created that walkway in the first place, so, yeah, it's better than no sidewalk, but it really does speak to, you know, what the town wants in its future pedestrian linkages, you know? You compare that with the safe feeling you have when you're walking alongside the canal walk.
Right.
On the other side of the water with a tree buffer.
It's like a completely different world, it's completely set apart from the road.
Even in the village, it feels safer walking on the sidewalk.
Right, even with like, a parking strip alongside, say, for example.
There's grass, there are trees, you're protected from the road by all of that, you're walking along next to the houses.
John talked at one time, you know, a while ago, about a really nice series of, well, we had an example in front of us, I think, from Burlington, of kind of street sections, which showed some nice relationships between the street, possible bike lane, parking, trees, sidewalk, commercial action. It's really worth paying good attention to, I think, as we create and ask for on a map like this, more of these kinds of linkages, and perhaps we ought to be more specific about what gets requested insofar as just how these are implemented.
Yeah, well, remember that the sidewalk that you're talking about, that goes up Mechanicsville Road, was created by us. We didn't, we didn't have a developer that we had to extract a, a positive design out of. We had, we had sometimes the more difficult client, which was us.
Yeah, well, and, I mean, we had existing landowners who I'm sure weren't always happy about this intrusion, judging by how long it took them.
And it took.
That would be an understatement, uh, for, for that segment on McCannsville Road. But it does speak to, I think, the, the positive that, of what John brought up that you were referencing, that if we could, if we had a public work standard for streetscapes, and maybe there would be more than one.
Yeah.
With a representative diagram, then perhaps when we did public, both public projects and we entertained private development, that we're gonna be creating streetscapes, there'd be something to reference. So that when a difficult landowner said, no, you're not going up front of my property, the select board could say, well, listen, we need to, and by the way, this is our design standard, and we just have to accommodate that.
Right.
It requires a, a green buffer, it requires space to plant some trees. Um, that's not to say they wouldn't still cut a deal just to get the project to go without having to go through an extra five years of eminent domain, but, um,
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe it would help.
Why it took so long, Alex, though? That seemed to be just at the very end. That was my recognition of it, the eminent domain part, or I don't know if it really ever came to that. People did agree. But, and it was work for Rocky, but it seemed to me it was just at the very end, that most of it, that that was a small part of it. It just took forever. I don't know why. There was maybe no money available. But talking about that, um, the park, um, by Good Times, is that considered a park?
Yes.
Those trees that have been planted there by one sixteen, I don't know how many years ago, are the most beautiful this year that they've ever been.
They are. They're really.
And it's dry this summer, and I, I can't, I'm like, wow, they are so becoming full. I don't know what they're called. But that's really very attractive this year.
They're linden trees.
Are they? And they're like, they've really branched out.
Canopy tree, but.
Yeah, it's nice.
That wasn't that long ago that they were planted.
No, that was why.
Three years ago.
Four, five years.
Right, but. This year, they've like taken off.
You were on the village steering committee, and you guys created that plan.
It's nice. Good job.
Yeah, I mean, we tried to get it closer to the road, too.
And they are close to the road, but they're very nice. And I, at first I thought, oh, those are never gonna grow, what, why aren't they growing? But this year they are.
It's the cars.
Yeah. They love that carbon dioxide.
They heat it up.
So Alex, are we giving up this potential piece of community facility on the Quinn property?
And moving it across the road.
So, so what I did in draft two of the map, that was in your packets and there's extra, extras on the table, was, uh, based on the discussion at the June twenty-seventh meeting, I, I moved it to the east side of one, of, uh, McCannsville. And I shrunk it on the west side. It's labeled F on the, and it's a tiny little, tiny little square, you know, big enough to do like a little fill and planting and bench, basically. And my thought was, you know, each of these lettered community spaces would have, um, a, a, a document, you know, that went with the official map that would describe each, you know, A, linear route one sixteen park, approximately this width, uh, purpose is this, uh, you know, whatever else we want to flesh that out with, and so in this case, F would be described kind of like what, what John was talking about, a, uh, a stop along a si- a public sidewalk with some shade and a bench, and G is the, is the more substantial park that would be a neighborhood destination for, and, and we need to come up with what those purposes are, you know, is it a tennis court and a play structure and some shaded space and benches and tables, or is it, is it rec fields or, you know, what is it exactly?
Now, you've walked down by that, that creek, which you said is not very attractive.
The canal, you mean?
Has anyone else been back there to see if it's?
Where's that?
This, well, it would have been back.
This is, yeah, so. Let me scan up so we can all be looking.
Kind of nice down there, I think.
Looking at what Barbara's talking about.
Considering it's a canal.
So it's, Barbara's referring to the canal itself, which runs right through here. And at the, at that other meeting, I had shown a possible park here, and you guys had said, well, maybe put it up here somewhere, and I had said at that meeting, you know, this portion of the canal doesn't seem that attractive to me as a place to, um, you know, as, as a streamside sort of park destination. But, but, Barbara, your question was, has anybody else walked over there? Is it really all that bad? Maybe is it nice?
I'm just wondering if you could put a trail along the property line to the canal, walk the canal, and then cross over into, oh, what's the other, the business?
Here, let me zoom out so I can see where.
Yeah, that one. Thank you.
Where are you thinking the start and end would be? This red button is the point there.
I can manage this red button. Uh, where are we? So go along here, oops, up there, cross over, connect to the NRG trails.
Gotcha.
I wonder too, um, you know, this sounds like heresy maybe, but at one time, uh, probably mostly men created the canal in the first place for an economic purpose. Uh, it doesn't serve that purpose any longer, um, in terms of just our aspirations to return the watershed to its somewhat natural form and all the discussion about, uh, water courses and. When I look on, uh, the draft two map, say, for example, it looks as if that little upward leg from Patrick Brook uh, sort of ends just before it gets to the canal, or is that just probably not accurate?
Can you point to which one you're talking about?
Well, on the map, it's probably hard to see here, but, um, I would say roughly, uh, at that juncture, right there, the indication is that this water course does not link to that one.
That's just a, that's just a mapping error. It does.
Well, if it does, how does water decide which way it's gonna go right at that point? Because we've got the canal coming here. We've got some water courses coming from that direction. In essence, it's kind of like the Erie Canal in Rochester, you know.
There's a, there's a dam there. There's a water control structure.
There is.
That tries to keep water in the canal and, and out of that, um, stream that proceeds.
So what would happen if the canal closed? And all this water, uh, was naturally allowed to really return back to Patrick Brook. As I said, it sounds like heresy.
Right, I think some people might lose their homes.
Why? You mean like?
If it, if the canal was allowed to break open or whatever.
No, you'd just fill it.
Oh, is that what you're saying? Okay.
Yeah, that's why, that's the heresy part.
Okay.
And this is a Dutchman talking about this, okay?
You know more than I, for sure.
Um, well, I'm just sort of saying, um.
I've cr- I, I, I don't know what, what's gonna happen, but it would, just imagining Patrick Brook, I, you know, I've driven on, across Patrick Brook on one sixteen in a heavy rain, and, you know, the water is up to the, you know, it's at flood stage, and um, I just, I cannot see how Patrick Brook can handle any more.
Yeah.
Water.
The canal ultimately comes back into Patrick Brook, right?
Yes.
Or it empties into the Laplat.
No, it empties into the Laplat.
And then Patrick Brook empties into the Laplat, too.
Downstream, yeah.
Isn't there a fire department and water service?
Yes, the, the fire chief would say, the heresy of letting the canal be empty, uh, except for in dry periods like it is now, is that, that's the fire department's backup water supply. Should there be?
Right there at the bridge.
Yeah, should there be such an, uh, an immense fire that the, the waters, the town water system sort of was out, then they would pull from that source.
And I think I have something to do with, um, Nestack, too.
Well.
Don't they have a water pond or?
Nestack, uh, has a fire pond, um, which is not, which I think is still all connected to their facility, so they need water in the canal to then feed the fire pond. But it's not really necessary, because we have a town water system that would supply the sprinklers in their building, but it would require some, um, some expenditure to replumb.
Yeah. It's not a serious suggestion, you guys. I'm not, um, really suggesting.
Canal walk would no longer be the canal walk.
Right, plus, I'm not sure if Will would like that over at the public house.
Sure. But it is interesting, because, and one of the reasons I was suggesting was there are numerous places along here, like that little sliver, that suddenly change character quite dramatically when that canal is gone. It's also sort of like, you know, we, we were talking about this piece, correct?
Yep.
Um, it's a piece because of that waterway, but also I guess there's a property boundary there. Who owns this junk?
Dave Blitterstorf.
That's where the solar panels are.
How about build a small bridge over to the little triangular spot from the canal walk?
Yeah, well, when you can already sort of do it at the end, uh.
You can get to that triangle.
Yeah, you can.
At the top end.
Yeah.
Where the bench is.
I, I will say in answer to Barbara's question, um, this idea of running a trail like from here down the canal and then across to connect to the, you know, proposed trail through here.
Yeah.
Um, makes sense to me, except for this. Um, what you're not seeing is that this is a very large wetland area and flood hazard area. It'd be, I think it'd be nearly impossible to run a, a trail through there unless it was a really elevated boardwalk, probably more so than what you see at, uh, the Burlington Bike Path on the north end, near the, near the, uh, bridge over the Winuski, where they have, you know, thousands, thousand-plus feet boardwalked. So I think that would be a real logistical problem, um.
If it were a seasonal trail in the summer, when it's dry, cryer.
A, a summer like this one, yeah.
Right.
Well, the canal, um, you know, it's such a, uh, my wife, Stevie, just got back from, uh, visiting our son in Holland, and, you know, they were riding their bikes all over the place, and she said, the nature of the bike paths along the canals is one of the most spectacular cultural resources in that country, she said. You know, you're always there linked up with the water in some way. It's pretty nice.
Another impact of changing the flow in Patrick Brook is the culvert slash bridge under one sixteen is undersized now. And so.
For the canal?
Not for the canal, for Patrick Brook. That area beyond, as you're headed north past Kenny.
Yeah.
That culvert slash bridge is undersized, and that's why Maggie's saying she observes the water right up to the.
On the east side.
One sixteen, on the east side, because that's a pinch point right there. There's been a lot of discussion around the Hanaford project, whether that needs to be increased in size.
So if those are your general thoughts and observations from the walkabout, um, you do have a second draft of the, of the official map that was in your packets for tonight. I made the changes that you talked about at the June twenty-seventh meeting. I still haven't dropped the stormwater, uh, treatment areas onto the map. I'm not sure, as I've said a couple times, that you'll be able to see them, because they're so small. I may need to do a inset or a separate map for those, but, um, several features you wanted removed, those were removed. Um, some features rerouted, those were rerouted. Um, I dropped the intersection improvement areas on the map. Um, but I'm, and I just le- I just lettered the, 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 the main community facility areas that we've been doing some talking about, and I wondered, um, if you had thoughts on what each of those areas, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, should be, um.
Now, G, is there any way we can incorporate, aren't they looking at donating some land to the town, to the cemetery?
They are, good, uh, good point.
Could you incorporate them together somehow?
So G, as shown on this draft official map, is here on this aerial photo, um, and the area that the Quinn family's thinking of donating is here, this little notch out of the northern part of their property. So my thought, G doesn't have to be there at all, nor does it have to be in that location, even if it was somewhere. I just put it in that location, because I thought it was, it would be connected to what they were donating and the town's existing land, so that you would have a park that would back up to this wooded edge and could therefore, you know, provide connectivity to the cemetery, but also have some open, you know, meadow space to be used for other sorts of park-like things, whether that's courts or, um, play area or what have you. But yeah, Dennis, this is what they've been talking about donating, this little notch right here.
So does that join the cemetery property?
Yes.
Yeah.
But isn't that sort of a, a ravine? Is that what I'm thinking, or is?
I, I don't think it's very usable. I'm not, uh, the cemetery commission has expressed interest, I think, because there might be some usable area in here. Um, I, but yeah, to me, it's got two streams running through it, and, um, it's got some topography like you're talking about, Maggie, so, um.
We kind of looked at it, and it wasn't all usable.
There's been discussion about adding some land on that side adjacent to the cemetery for a better road access.
Yeah.
This would not be it, so.
They talk about it as if that would be part of that, but I don't understand how that would work.
Topographically, it would be a major road project.
I don't, I don't get it either, John. I, I've been confused about that ever since it was suggested, but the folks who've walked it and talked about it with the family, you know, are still interested in it, so.
Do we need to have a, at some point, a specific discussion with this cemetery commission or representatives from them about?
Well, I, I think if the.
What's your need, and do you think that's?
I think then if, if you, if you want the official map to show a, a future community facility here or somewhere in this vicinity, and it's close to that, then sure, yeah, it would make sense to.
We need access to, unless it's a totally walking access to a community facility, we would.
That's a good point. This, this version of the official map shows it as sort of a landlocked, and it would need to have sidewalk or road access for sure, so we could either a, amend, you know, fix that on the next version of this, or describe it somehow as, as a place that's intended to be accessed from development, uh, roads and sidewalks that are anticipated in this, in this, uh.
Yeah, I think.
Area.
I think you, you, you've placed it in a way that it's in the, it's in the village area, right, and I think, you know, we anticipate development in this area. So, I mean, this area should be served by those roads, which will hopefully become, you know, not private roads, and, you know, part of the set of public roads, so that we're not forcing, you know, public traffic onto a private road.
So that would be something to either try to show on the map, like, to address John's point of, hey, how do you even get there, or include in the notes for letter G, you know, that this is intended to be this sort of park, about approximately this large, and anticipated to have access via roads that would be created as part of the development of that parcel, uh, with the, with the hope that one or more of them would become public roads.
So, the use that was talked about for G, whichever side of the road it was on, but where it is now, is, is some kind of public park?
Well, that's how I proposed it, was a, was a place in that side of the, that quadrant of the village growth area that would provide for the needs of, you know, the more densely settled residential neighborhoods that are, that we want to spring up over there, so in, in my mind, I was thinking things like a tennis court, um, bocce courts, uh, benches and tables, you know, you know, wooded, uh, shade tree areas for shade, maybe a, maybe a play structure.
Yep. And the gray is the village growth area.
Correct.
Things I was thinking about was like, like picnic shelter.
Set of anorak chairs, maybe a fire pit, um.
It's a nice view from that.
Yeah. And parking, and if you're gonna have a picnic shelter, you need some sort of bathroom.
Do we?
And a way to cook food.
Do we have to get that specific? Can we just say public recreation of some kind?
Um, so I'm pushing you to be more specific than just public recreation, but I don't know that you need to get down to the level of detail of, you know, barbecue grill, um, but I, I think that our experience with, um, the Hanaford application and the, and the difficulties we had in applying the official map to it was that they claimed, and I think the DRB, to some extent, uh, understood their complaint, that the official map wasn't specific enough, and so they, they weren't sure what it meant, and then when they, when they said, well, we will accommodate it, but we'll just pick one of the options you, you indicated, it's the farmer's market and call it a. one of the options you, you indicated, it's the farmer's market and call it a A." Whereas if, if we could get a sense of like, A is this, B and C are this, D is this, and have them all complement each other, then we can be more specific about what G, um, needs to be. The, the easiest thing for me to relate to is rec fields. We've done so much work to create rec fields in the last 10 years and, and with the Bisnet Rec area be under construction. That it would be good to, to call out G, for example, and say, "Not a rec field."
Right.
Even if it's a public recreation area, it doesn't need to be a rec field. So it's a different kind of recreation area. Maybe a picnic shelter, maybe a tennis court, whatever.
The only other picnic shelter we have in town is the school.
Can't be used a lot of times.
Yeah. If that's the case, one would want it closer to the road, I suspect.
Well, I mean, the, the, the town I went to school in, you know, had a picnic shelter that was on top of a hill. I mean, and frankly, there was a, there was a crappy, you know, little one-way road to try and get up to it, up a steep, you know, incline. But it, and it was all tree and it was really, really pleasant up there. I used to take my lunch hour from high school and go up there and read.
Bet you were doing something else, Joe.
I was a nerd.
It's hot. Hot?
Motion with your hand?
You're the chair.
Well, do you want to just walk through each of, each of the lettered numbers, A, B, C, D, E, F, G? And, and just give me a sense of what you want me to write up for each of them?
Right.
A is pretty easy, I think.
Linear, linear park.
Right.
Populated with shade trees. Architectural art. Benches. Communal areas.
Continuous path or sidewalk.
Right, absolutely.
And we have a red line showing right now it's straight, but.
Sidewalk, sidewalk separated from 116 by
Yeah, really a pleasant supper.
Big freaking rocks!
Maybe in fact, Alex, the red line which represents the sidewalk is shown right against 116.
Maybe move it to the other side.
Maybe put it on the other side or down the middle.
I can do that, that's easy.
Yeah.
That's really, I think, how all of us have thought of that.
Yeah. I mean, obviously, at this scale, it's not really meant to be interpreted as right along the street, but I can easily do that.
Too.
Yeah.
People will hate me forever for this suggestion. But, um, you know, in truth, I, I gotta go to, go to rehab three days a week and, and from work, the easiest way to get there is to go down Brownell Road, get on a Shumpike, get on whatever, and then there is, there is an old, was it Old Farm Road or whatever?
Double back along that.
Double back along that. And, and, you know, it's a fairly straight road with a hill, but they put like three speed bumps in. And, and it really, I mean, it's great. It really controls speed through there.
There's a thrill in being airborne, Joe.
And it's, and it's pleasant. I mean, it's a
Isn't there some islands in the middle of the road too?
No.
No.
Well, that's going up.
No.
Skunk hole or something.
They don't really want you to go on that road as a by, bypass.
All right, okay, erase the tape.
It used to be years ago before it had the speed bumps.
Well, yeah, but, I mean.
Where are you going with that, Joe? You had a point there somewhere.
He likes the speed bumps, is what I think you're saying.
You're worried, you're worried about, you're worried about traffic, you know, impinging on this, this linear parkway and 116, speed bumps.
But they're awful.
Okay, so that's A. Is everybody on the same page as what came out of Joe's mouth and some others?
Warless.
Great. How about B and C? They are connected. I labeled them separately because they reflect the master plan for the Haystack Crossing proposals. They don't have to look like this. I just made them that way because that's what was proposed. In that proposal, B is narrower than C. And is, and their, and their plan was designed as a, as a green space, you know, with a sidewalk winding through it and some tree plantings. That's about all they showed. And C was made a bit, uh, deeper so that it could potentially accommodate a public facility like a community center with a small parking lot or something. Or if not that, then a, a park of some sort.
My, my idea was with this was actually to flip it around. So to, so to put sort of a community center in B and that, that would co-locate parking with a Bisnet Rec area, right? And then C, I kind of envision is, okay, you know, maybe, maybe something with a, a bandstand gazebo or something like that. Tree park in, in, tell people that, that they should have businesses or housing facing. So it's not a really good example, um, but, you know, if you think of Maple Tree Place or whatever they call it now, and they have, they have the, the green space and they have businesses facing it, right? And it's, it's exactly what we were talking about earlier in that, that people will go there, right? If they have something to, you know, do, right? So if you put a business in there, you know, a coffee shop, whatever, a bandstand, you know, go listen to it. You can also think
Don't they have the B at the concerts? Don't they have concerts one night a week in Maple Tree Place?
Yeah.
Is it there in that?
Yeah, it's there. Yeah, they have a shell.
If this area is designated, it'd be a lot more residential than business.
It's mixed, the whole thing is mixed use.
It's both.
It's mixed use, yeah.
Not like Maple Tree though?
No.
No, 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 no. I mean, that was, that was a bad example, but I also think, I, I went to a wedding years ago down in, in Connecticut by the shore. We were staying at this bed and breakfast, you know, in this little town. And, you know, we, we walked, we walked out for dinner. We, we had dinner in a restaurant. There was an open park right across the street like this. They had a band that night. It was nice.
Well, I think B, the current Haystack Crossing Plan is mostly fronted by houses. I think those houses do front. There are two corner buildings at the eastern end of B that I assume are mixed use in their current plan at least. And then the larger C, green, is also fronted by an elderly housing project, I think, and the mixed-use building of some kind and, um.
I mean, I, I have, oh, I'm sorry, you
No, I was just gonna say that within the context of their plan at least, the virtue of those spaces are as open space and linkage ultimately to, um, you know, the, the playground or the rec fields from 116, depending on what happens on the Riggs property. But, um, I don't, it's hard for me to envision filling those in with, say, some kind of significant community facility other than maybe a performance space or something.
So you, you're saying a, a building in C, uh, a, a municipal building would, would run counter to the, what you like about that space?
Well, you know, look at it. All of a sudden you plop something in the middle of it?
It's gone as an open space then.
Well, unless it's in a, you know, a modest structure or some kind of
A band, a bandshell or
Well, yeah, I think a community center would be a modest structure. And you could still have some green space around it. Remember, these buildings that are shown, you, sorry, nobody's looking at what Rolf and I are seeing. Let me, let me try to find what he's looking at so you can, everybody can see it. Uh, now I have to find it. Where the heck would it be?
I don't picture a community center as being a modest building.
Not as we get older.
Well, when, when I say modest, I mean, um, you know, the size of the police station or, or the size of
It's very modest, I think.
The size of the EFG building next to the police station. I don't envision a community center to be the size of, say, um, uh, the Obashan Hardware Plaza, you know, that's much larger. Or the Neztek Building. So when I say modest, that's, that's what I mean. And I'm, I'll try to find this map that Rolf's looking at, but that space is large enough to accommodate that and still have green space. But I understand what you're saying, you, that if you, if you did any building in there with some additional parking, it might chew it up too much.
Well, it's a good location as far as, hey, you're close to some, or at least that's kind of what's proposed, I think, some senior citizen housing in here.
Actually, no, that, again, that's not, that is that. Yeah, that's a, that's an apartment, a mixed-use building with, uh, commercial below and apartments above.
Like number, number 14, is that what you're? There's so many sketch plans, if you could even name the one that you're going for.
It's Haystack Crossing Sketch Plan. And then
Is it the rendered?
And it really forms the, pretty much the beginning of, uh, well, what else? Does, it helped me sort of, uh, understand a prescription for that property, I guess,
Yeah, I don't begin to be able to find it fast enough, so.
So I, I just went to
Let's not talk about the specifics of the Haystack Plan as much as we're thinking.
It's easier to find right through the website, but I, the, the, the long, narrow one, I, to be honest, it looks like it's in people's backyards. It reminds me of that kind of useless open space, um, at Creekside, although this does, you know, it has roads on, on either end. And it's hard, you know, just being surrounded by, mostly by private homes, it really makes me wonder how much of a truly public space would this be? How comfortable would you be, you know, kicking, kicking a ball, looking, yeah?
Or the people in the house.
The other one is, does look a more, like the one that, the square one closer to 116, I think, especially since they're, you know, mixed-use buildings, um. And to be honest, closer to 116 seems more of a possibility. But unless there's some kind of, for that long one, some kind of a destination, a reason to go there, um, I, you know, I'm, I'm not sure.
Well, I've seen spaces like this, especially when the sidewalk, say, for example, uh, basically is at the property line right there. You know, we're talking about, what's, what's the number there?
To get everybody caught up, this is the Haystack Plan and we're talking about, uh, on the official map, I've tried to mirror this, this would be B from the official map draft, and this would be C.
Yep.
And it's hard for me to read these numbers, so I'm not sure. I guess that's a two and that's maybe a six. So this is that long linear one with that, that is basically people's houses, you know, fronting on it. And this is the slightly chunkier one that has, uh, is in more of a corridor of mixed use and commercial use. This is supposed to be a mixed-use building. These are residential.
Yeah, isn't that land supposed to be for them because they don't have much land? I think in part, but I
They, they proposed it as a community park, so not just for the neighborhood, but for the community at large.
What's that big white spot on the right?
That's the bougie property that fronts on 116. Sure, it'd be right on 116.
Where's the rec field then?
Over here, right here.
Out there, okay.
But I, I think if you provide sidewalks in front of those houses, um, like this plan shows, that really makes it a, a, more of a public domain in my estimation, I guess.
Are those houses oriented so that the front of the house looks at the park? And if so, how do we control that?
Looks like the back of their houses. Well, if you look at the, the driveways coming in from the other side. They look like horses to me, facing the park.
I don't think I, can you just go? You remember that, that, that other road on the other side of the houses is more of an access?
Lane.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't, I think they could. I don't think that we want to go too far down into the weeds here. That this is, this was a, a sketch plan that, uh, and the, the orientation of the houses are, is not necessarily fixed at this point. Your job is tonight is to say, "Do we want a community facility in this area? What, what, what do we want it to, how big do we want it and what location and what do we want it to do?" And, and if, if, if you design something that is counter to their plan, they will have to change their plan to accommodate it and they, they will do that.
Well, but, but look also at this, um, the, where the number two is in that narrow part, there's, you know, up closer to the, to the road with a, um, head-in parking, you know, a decent-sized community center could fit right where they've got a little bandstand or something.
Right, here?
Yeah, and still leave plenty of room for, uh, for park.
I just wouldn't put the community center more in mine.
Maybe closer to the ball fields. That way.
I'd put it right next to that parking lot.
Yeah, I would like to see a bigger connection between
True.
This open space and the rec fields and then some public activity, including a cafe, whatever, as a joint between the rec fields and this space. All of a sudden it narrows down and you're walking on a sidewalk between two private houses. I, I think that's bad design.
Those bottom three houses next to that parking lot? That'd be a perfect spot right there.
Well, even if
You don't even need that much space.
I mean, even if, even if you took the, the, the present walkway in one house lot, right? Made that the community center, then trade, traded them, you know, part of, part of this thinner lot C, right? Like the back third, and say, "Make that commercial space," you know, for that restaurant or something. Go in right there, right? And then, then that has a facing into what's left of C. Right? And you put some walkways to get you from the ball fields through the community center into what's left of C and then B. I'm sorry, I think, I think I
Right, you're, you're talking about
So B
Seed, seed some of this.
Yeah, seed some of B, right, for commercial in exchange for taking one of those house lots, right, making that the community center. So now that co-locates with the ball field, right? Take a sliver, take a sliver from that commercial area for a walkway to get you to the rest of B. Keep C like it is, so number six, keep it like it is.
Yeah.
Right? Designate commercial lot on the, on the west side of B. And in return for that, right, mark for public space, one of the house lots that abuts that walkway between the ball, yeah.
When are, when are, when are those fields used? I mean, I assume
Evenings and weekends.
Evenings and weekends. When would we use community center?
Well, um, I mean, it could be used in conjunction with the ball fields because you need restroom somewhere. So, okay, that's, that's something you can do in a community center. You got the parking lot there. You know, it could, it could be your, your, um, you know, your, I'm losing it. Senior citizen center for, for during the day on weekdays, right? Can, can co-locate there. You got the parking lot?
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm, I was asking about ours because if we're talking about mixed-use parking, just to make sure that, you know, they're not going to be using that parking lot because the only reason to have it there is the, is the parking lot. And I'm
The only reason to have what?
I mean, the parking lot, the restroom facilities, and creating this kind of, I won't say it's quite contiguous because I'm telling you to, to swap some land, but, um, nearly contiguous swath of public use, um, stuff.
Wouldn't there be the possibility of parking on the street also? That street right there?
So this is an example that I live next to now. This is the new north end of Burlington. This is the Miller Center, which is a community center. And this is Shifletti, I'm not sure how to pronounce it, I think it's pronounced that way, Park, which has four baseball fields. And this is CP Smith Elementary School with a whole bunch of green space in there. So this is an example of what you're talking about, I think, Joe, of, you know, you've got a rec, a, a rec area that gets a lot of use, mostly baseball, and you've got a community center, uh, that serves a whole variety of uses. It has an indoor gym, uh, for indoor basketball and that sort of thing as well as
It's much bigger, I think, than we're thinking of.
Well, it's, it's bigger.
Yeah, I mean, it serves a much denser population, but it's the same idea of having a community center next to a record, rec area. And having some symbiosis there.
I mean, if the building was too small, what would you do in it?
I mean, if the building was too small, what would you do in it?
Well, I think Rolf could speak to that. He's the man working on a community center, right?
Aren't we talking about the kind of thing that is in Charlotte, a senior center?
Yeah, meeting rooms and-
Community center?
That's not what I think I'm in, as a place for, place for people to meet and have-
Some larger meeting rooms and smaller meeting rooms, a kitchen, bathrooms, an office area for the staff to operate out of.
I mean, one of these lots with a walkway, it looks pretty big. I mean, it's big enough for a house and a D.C. yard.
How big are those lots?
It's a good question. I don't know. I'd have to measure them up. Those, the ones that, on this side of the project are the largest ones, and they're designed for the larger, single-family homes. This, this project is designed to have a mix of residential units, from apartments to small townhomes to small sort of carriage-style, single-family homes, to more traditional, big, single-family homes on that west side, facing the park or the rec fields.
Because the one thing I, I like least about this plan is just all the single-family homes. And I like the idea of throwing something else into the mix.
Yeah, and we, we will have a hard time dictating a commercial use in any particular spot, especially on that side of the project, which is as far away from the golden ribbon of 116 as you can get. But this whole conversation is about community facilities, which we can determine through the official map. So if you think that a community space, whether it's a building or something else next to the rec area is the right way to go, then I can, I can amend this map and show that.
I just think some sort of-
Commercial use, restaurant, coffee shop, whatever, kind of- Well, yeah, but-
So you were saying to swap out a piece of the longer section?
Yeah, I probably, I think it'd probably make more sense to swap out the, the site below the walkway.
So this would become a community space?
No, I think the upper one, Joe. Well, put the upper one together with the walkway area, and now you've got a connection that you can control from this area two and nine, instead of jogging it.
Well, I think, I think you got it either way. I mean, keep, keep the walkway, right? And either, either pick the lot above or the lot below. So, so the lot below has better access to the parking lot, which is good for a senior center.
Well, actually, wait a minute. I have to remind you, and me as well, that this, this did not get built per the plan. The plan's got revised, so the, the access to the parking lot comes in here. I guess that could change when this development happens, but in any case, it's probably not worth spending time arguing the details of that, because the official map isn't going to be at that level of detail. It's going to say, we want a community space here, and the notes are going to say, we want it adjacent to the rec area, with access to, you know, to use shared parking, and then leave it at that, and the developers-
You shouldn't say, you shouldn't say what size?
Well, yeah, we'll say what size, but we're not going to say it should be 50 feet this way or 100 feet that way.
Alex, if you look at the draft two and you take B, and just extend it so that it touches up against the bisinet rec area, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, I can draw it there. But what I'm saying is if-
I was going to be kinder.
If these guys, if these guys have to modify their plan, and they come in and it shows that, you know, a 25-foot offset in the other direction, it's, as long as it accommodates the purpose, you know, we're not, we're not in the business of designing this development. We're in the business of identifying where we want community space and what we want it to do. The DRB will do the rest. But does everybody like Joe's? Because I'm, I'm hearing consensus from Maggie, Joe, and John about this idea of putting a community space next to the rec area.
Extending public space-
I'm at a concert, I want, you know, ice cream.
Okay.
To be seasonal.
And even, Alex, the difference in width between the C and the B, I think that's getting too-
Too fine a detail?
Finely detailed. Just a broad strip, something like the width of B coming from Brian's property all the way through to the rec area.
So I can do that, and I was going to ask that question. Do you still want there to be a connection from the rec fields all the way to 116 as a community facility on the map? And so I can modify B and C, and I'll show it, you can see it next time and haggle about it some more. But why, why wouldn't we then connect it to 116 through the bougie property?
I think we-
There's a house there. That makes it a little hard, but-
Right, and it belongs to someone privately, and we would have to buy it.
If it ends up being a supermarket, it might be a little challenging, but it could prove a bit.
So this map does thankfully extend, so there's, you know, it would go right, right through the house, potentially, unless it's sort of jogged up.
Well, I, I think, if we-
It's diagrammatic, though, it's not-
Well, remember, we are going to go and talk to each of these landowners about what we're proposing to put on their property. And I think it's a little, a little harder to go to somebody and say, we're planning to have a big green space with trees where your house is.
Right.
Yeah.
And they're going to say, why, why, why is my house being eliminated for a bunch of trees?
So if we say, if we say connection, it, why were you saying it has to be straight down the middle of the property?
I'm not saying it has to be straight down the middle. We could, we could sort of bob and weave it. But right now, this draft of the official map doesn't show any connections. So do you want there to be a connection to 116? If there is, I'll draw it.
What would be the benefit?
I don't know. That's why I'm trying to raise the question.
There, there are plenty of, of sidewalks and, and paths, I think.
To get there from 116. And this, and this map isn't quite right either, because, or, or, you know, sketch isn't quite right, because it doesn't have a linear park that goes across the front of the whole thing, right?
I would think that it would be almost mandatory to link that long linear park from 116 to B and C through that property.
I don't think it'd make the most sense.
But it doesn't have to be a straight line.
Doesn't need to be a straight line, but I think there needs to be some kind of linkage between the two.
But why can't you go around the south?
Pleasant recreational path, something.
Something along the lines of-
Something that measures right around the border.
Right, exactly.
Something similar to what A is, in my mind, what we're talking about in the A strip. Have a leg of that come over and touch C.
You know, Vermont roads don't go through the middle of the field. They preserve the-
You just would have to go a little south, and then you would be on the, what looks like a road, a street.
Yeah, I think Marie's question was, why can't this future road and sidewalk system be your connection into that? And Rolf, you're saying, you want there to be a more direct connection, maybe not straight, but-
Yeah, that just makes that land pretty much useless.
Yeah, I don't see how you, unless they, excited about it.
Well, if you went through the middle of it, there are lots of creative ways to go through it. Right, but I think Marie's right.
I would say no now, if it was my property. Could just take a right-hand turn and be on the road.
The virtue of B and C is that there is no road through there. It's certainly pleasing in that regard, and I think you could extend that right through Bougie's property.
This discussion, and we're at 8:20.
Okey-dokey.
That's really dreaming, I think. You're an architect.
I get paid to do that.
You do, and I respect it.
I'm an architect, and I agree with Rolf.
Yeah, I'm sure you do.
I'm a planner also, and I agree with Rolf is saying, and Joe and Maggie.
We disagree.
All right, it sucks.
But we still like you.
Let's go have a beer.
That's okay.
That's why we're all here, right?
You want to continue to discuss it next time, right, Joe?
That's right, exactly.
Yep, I think, I think it was devolving anyways, so it's time to-
So the only other bullet item on this agenda item was just a heads-up, not to talk about it, but just to tell you that the Trails Committee's coming, next meeting, to talk about the possibility of a town-wide official map and which trail should be on it. And if we have time, which maybe we won't, maybe not ready, at some point I want to talk to you about how we're going to do our outreach to all these landowners in the community, because I think once September hits, we can do that. We can't do it now. It's, people are too scattered, but. So anyways, that's on tap for the next meeting. More talk about this, but we'll blow it up to the whole town.
Okay, village area design standards, 8:15, 8:45. So second draft of public open space.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't make any revisions from your discussion on June 27th, or was it June 13th?
It says June 13th, and I don't remember any of this.
I do have some notes. I do have some notes on, on some ideas that you had. But I thought we got a little bit stuck at that meeting on, again, how much do we need? How many square feet, and what the minimum size would be? And my recollection was that, the thought was, well, maybe if we do a little more work on the official map, we might have a better sense of these larger community facilities, and maybe that might inform what we put in this section about other green spaces and how big they need to be. Part of me was thinking secretly, well, if we actually figure it out where we want the bigger ones to be, maybe we don't have to require very big ones in this green space design standard section. We can just focus on the small ones and not worry about requiring a development to have, you know, an acre and a half of green space, you know, in a big blob, because they'll have to do that as a function of the official map. But in any case, it was your second draft. We had some comments at the June 13th meeting, and this was on the agenda in case this official map discussion had, gives you thoughts to make some more comments. Anybody look at it again?
I have to confess, I did not. Excuse me.
Don't start with the yawn.
Oh, I'm not starting, I'm continuing.
Yeah.
What's the rumor of the police station moving?
There's no rumor of the police station moving. There's rumor of the fire station moving.
That's what I mean, fire station. So that would make a good community facility.
Yeah, there's been some limited discussion about if the fire station moved to the Tailhook towing site, that would free up the fire station building on land that the town owns, and maybe that building could be used as some kind of community space or what have you. But I don't know that there's any level of seriousness in those discussions. I've just heard the rumors like you have.
It's getting serious.
Okay, see, it's getting serious.
I think the fire department's getting serious. So wouldn't that make a good-
Is there any indication?
Tailhook wants to sell it. The fire station, the fire, fire people want to buy it.
I think that's maybe where it started, was the realization that Tailhook was interested in relocating or leaving that, that little spot. I assume just to leave Heinsburg, but I don't know for sure. So yeah, that's when the fire department said, hey, maybe that's the place we could go, because it's a bigger building, the Tailhook building, right, so they feel like they could, they could do more with it.
But I wonder if the fire chief should sit in the DRB hearings on traffic to realize that the traffic line is going to reach the driveway of-
They have sirens.
Hannaford.
And beyond.
Well, anyways, that's the answer to your question. There's rumor. I don't know how serious it is, but Rolf said, you know.
It's more than a rumor.
It's more than a-
But if that happened, would we want two community facilities, or?
Three, four, five? We're all getting old.
It's a good question.
I want my own.
We love paying taxes.
We'd be lonely. Yeah, we'll just use Rolf's living room.
Based on my experience with the public facilities project that included the fire station, I caution, I caution the town wanting to own that building.
I bet it's warm and cozy in the winter.
It's not. The insulation is minimal.
We own the land. I don't know if we own the building.
We do have to own it, otherwise they have to pay taxes on it.
Yeah, we already own it.
We do, but it's, I think John is alluding to some things that I think too.
No, I mean, the roof structure, the wall structure, the insulation in the building is absolutely minimal.
Put room in the back.
In what, the fire station?
Yes.
Yeah, I think you're right, absolutely.
No, the police station is state-of-the-art, in the opposite direction.
Yeah.
So, yes, I know we already own it, but do we want to take it on as a building that will be efficient for us?
Yeah, we sort of jumped back to the other agenda item, thanks, Dennis, but maybe, maybe Rolf-
I don't want to do two places.
Maybe, Rolf, since you are actively trying to think about community centers, you could reach out to the fire department and tell them, hey, I also serve on the planning commission, and we're talking about places for future community facilities. Maybe, maybe we ought to hear from you.
Rolf, what's your, just, I'm curious, what's your take on the location that we just talked about and the location of right on 116 for a community center?
Well, I think some of what Joe said makes a lot of sense. If you've got a recreation area, and I didn't want to give him, you know, carte blanche. You know, especially if it's more youth recreation, adult recreation, that kind of facility. But what also gets talked about when people talk about a community center is facilities for people who are older. You know, sort of a combination of maybe the Charlotte Senior Center and what Alex showed us. But especially with a recreational focus, I mean, putting it next to the recreation area like that makes a lot of sense, you know? On the other hand, if it's like serving lots of different constituencies, to have it a little more centrally placed, and whether you like the fire station building or not, that's maybe not a bad spot, and it's adjacent to some town-owned land and all that sort of stuff, regardless of the condition of the building. Or you look at somebody planning a major senior facility in a development in Heinsburg in that northwest district, and you sort of say, especially for senior citizens, if you've got an apartment building full of oldies, hey, maybe you ought to have a facility that serves them not too far away, you know?
I'm hoping there's a facility within that building.
Well, there always is something, but, you know, none of those places are self-contained, and it's good for people to get out. That's right. So to have a community center or a senior center or some combination thereof that sits close to something like that, you know, especially for older people, we have this, not to digress, but we tend to sequester people away, you know? You go live at Wake Robin, places like that, which strikes me as just ludicrous, you know? You want to be closer to those things that keep you alive, you know, or maybe irritate you.
They have everything there, Rolf. I know a lot of people that love it.
Yeah, some people like it, you know?
You have to be wealthy, though.
They don't have young people. They do not have young people, and I know people who live there.
I think young people work there, though, Joan. A lot of young people.
They do, but that's not the same kind of relationship as a community of neighbors.
True, it's true, but-
Joe works there. Joe who used to cook our pizzas. I had one comment about, on page two of the village's design standards, where we switched from high-quality to well-designed. We're still using very open-ended, to my mind, vague terms. I'd like to expand what well-designed means, and I wrote out something that might be a beginning, at least. Public open spaces shall be well-designed to adequately and safely accommodate the proposed activity or activities, i.e. dimensions, walking surfaces, ground covers, seating, water features, shrub and tree planting, lighting fixtures, play structures, and other hardscape shall be included and described or defined. So somehow, what is well-designed? It still remains to be decided by the developer, but at least we can give some clues to the DRB as to what we want them to look at when they're deciding whether this is well-designed or not. So I've got this written out, Alex, if this is anything people are interested in.
You could email it to me. I'll take it, but, yeah. Barb, could you pass that over?
I can email it to you. It's electronic.
That's great. Very specific feedback and language. I like that. Anybody else got anything that good? Anybody else got anything that good? Sorry, anybody else got something that specific with real language? Not just a concern, but a suggestion for wordsmithing?
No, no. Just an idea.
That's all we peddling around here, John, is ideas, hopefully they're good. If not, you know, I'm happy to make that change and some of the others that were suggested at the June thirteenth meeting, and put this back in front of you as a draft three. Again, I, I, I felt like our opens, or our official map discussion might impact the, 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 um, the numbers on page one.
Well, it's interesting because, you know, thinking of the Black Rock proposal, would, what they've already, would the community facilities that we're thinking of for, and that they've already proposed, but if, if we were just to propose our community facilities, the park, a community center, would that take the place of this requirement?
Yeah, the difference in my mind is that, um, the official map only requires that they leave space for, not that they create.
Actually.
Or, or build.
Fund it, alright.
This is saying, you have to, you have to create the space and make it functional. So, this gets us, this requires them to put real money in and not just leave room for something. So they, they can work together that way.
So they could, they could...
But at the same time, you know, I, I, I'm a little nervous about saying on the official map, we want two and a half acres of your property set aside for something the town wants, and then here saying, we want an acre and a half of your property to be developed to look like this, and not have, you, you want there to be some kind of coordination between the two. For those properties that have these big official map elements on them, maybe that's easy to do, I don't know, I just, it was just a thought or concern. Maybe there's a direct tie-in to the official map that could be made, so as to say, for properties that have official map elements on them, the, the expectation is that the, the project will help develop some X percentage or portion of that space in, you know, in coordination with the town. And for those properties that do not have a substantial official map element, here's your, here's your square footage of green space you have to figure out, and maybe it's a smaller number, because we don't need big spaces on those other areas. Any other thoughts on this before, uh, you see it again another day?
Well, it does address above-ground utility infrastructure. But judging by the area over by Kenny Drug, those things are not well-screamed over there.
Right, they weren't well-sighted, to be, to be honest, it, it all got shoved into that space.
Yes.
Or not all, but a lot of it. Yeah, I think this language does speak to that, and hopefully improve the outcomes with regard to that.
Okay, we put our discussion on four. Doesn't sound it. Let's move on to number five then. Minutes of June twenty-seventh and July eleventh, take them in order.
So while you're finding yours, Kate, I had a couple on June twenty-seventh, on page two, the third paragraph. Uh, this is actually talking about what John said, so he may want to speak to this, but I just started, it says, uh, "He mentioned that it's the town's job to tell the developer what we want, then accommodate the developers." Not the other way around. I think what John was saying was, it's the town's job to tell the developer what we want, rather than accommodating the developers. So, something like that, right?
Yes.
Do you understand the difference?
Same thing I saw, Alex. That was, it was reversed the way, from the way we talked about it. Also, on the second paragraph on that same page, page two, uh... Now, this is, I had a comment about what we talked about, not, not a change, Alex actually did point out that, um, the road through Creekside would be a, an alternate way of, of getting to Kenny and DPD and Crystal Bakery without, without having to approach them from one sixteen. I kind of think not really, but that's what we talked about, so, no change.
So I've got one on the one, two, three, four, fifth paragraph, which starts Marie G. mentioned, and the second sentence says, Alex W. stated that because it's not on the map doesn't mean it can't be an official town road. What, what I was trying to say is just because it's not on the official map doesn't mean it can't be a future town road. So if you could just change that to, instead of an official town road, a future town road. And then the next sentence, it says, if it's on the map, developers have to build a road there. Uh, that's not accurate, if, if it's on the map, developers have to leave room for a road there. Because that's what the official map does, it doesn't compel them to construct just to accommodate space.
Well...
That's all I had.
Don't really look at the official map language that way, but okay. I mean, it, it compels the town to act if somebody wants to do something different there, or, um, the person gets to do what they want to do if we don't act. All right, other input for the twenty-seventh?
Motion to approve the minutes of June twenty-seventh to twenty-eighteen.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed?
I abstain.
All right, two extensions, I think six ayes, so, got that. Move on to, uh, July eleventh, I'm sure this is going to take a heck of a lot of discussion.
I wasn't there, but I would propose that on the, the walking tour piece, which was the crux of the meeting, just add a sentence to, you know, for posterity, so people know what, what the walking tour was, so something that reads something to the effect of, "The commission walked in the village..." "...to look at several areas discussed at previous meetings..."
Along the...
"...for possible future community facilities."
See, along the Mechanicsville...
Yeah, primarily along the Mechanicsville Road corridor.
Yeah.
We planned a new movie, The Walking Dead.
Locally produced at the cemetery?
Yes.
That cemetery is just lovely.
It is.
It's so varied, and I've never really had reason to...
And so well-maintained, it's beautifully maintained.
And, yeah, just the whole...
Yep, all the bodies.
Well, I'm sure it's difficult.
Former PCE members who...
Because it looks like there's a lot of rock in the ground and stuff like that.
It's lovely, I totally agree with you.
All right, well, we're devolving again, here we go. You have a motion?
I move, we approve those minutes.
As corrected. Second? It's your second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Stayed.
We got a lot of extensions.
Those four, right there.
Yeah, you only had four people there, so you're only going to get the four people voting who were there.
Well, we learned about the French Forest.
Yep. The French Forest, that's right.
So, I guess we call it approved, it's the best we can do. Okay, other business.
Um, so I'll just run down the list that I had for you, the, the select board did form a water and wastewater allocation committee to talk about, uh, give them recommendations on how to improve the allocation process and make it less of a first-come, first-serve, and maybe more of a process where we leverage that community asset and dole it out in ways that better achieves our vision than, rather than just whoever happens to apply. Jeff, who's not here tonight, um, is, is the planning commission's representative on that committee, and, and we had our first meeting last night, Jeff was at that meeting. So I just want to let you know that the committee's formed, we, we started meeting, and, um, the select board wants recommendations by the end of the calendar year, so, when they get them, I'll make sure to share them with your commission as well, if Jeff doesn't.
Who's on the commission?
Um, there's a representative from this board, that's Jeff, from the DRB, that's Sarah Murphy, um, from the affordable housing committee, that's Carl Bolan, from the economic development committee, that's Andrew Frost, um, from the select board, there are two members, Andrea Morganti and Tom Eyre, and three members of the public, um, who expressed interest a while back, Peter Herb, um, Dan Meyer, and Rob Bast. I'm just staffing it, I don't, you know, like this, I don't vote on stuff, but I just help them get someplace, hopefully. Uh, the Hannaford review starts up again at the August seventh DRB meeting, um, we're not under any illusions that that'll be the last hearing, but we're, we're hopeful that, uh, that most of the issues can be discussed at that meeting, maybe it'll be the last hearing, probably not, but, um, the planning commission's, uh, input to the DRB has not been officially read into the record, you know, they have it, but it hasn't been sort of recognized at a meeting, so that's the meeting where it'll be recognized. So if any of the commissioners want to come and, you know, speak to that, uh, that, that's, that's, uh, that's your option. Municipal planning grant, it's, this is our annual, um, funding opportunity through the state for planning, applications are due on October first, so we have some time, but I wanted to just give you a heads up, uh, we've been unsuccessful last several years in getting this grant, which has been unfortunate. Last year, we applied for a project to help us hire, uh, an economic development consultant, um, uh, and somebody familiar with wastewater allocation to help us design a better allocation system and do the economic sort of forecasting to know how we might pay for future improvements to our water and wastewater system. Seemed like a very good, relevant implementation kind of planning project, which the grants allow for, but it didn't get funded, so, um, I doubt we'll apply for that again, but, uh, we will certainly apply for something, so, just, you know, be thinking about the projects that we're currently working on and how we might wrap a piece of one of those into a grant application, or if there's something additional, you know, talk to me.
Have, haven't you applied previously, um, to have someone rewrite the regs?
Yes, and that got rejected as well.
And that means not worth trying again?
I don't think so, I think that sort of comprehensive soup-to-nuts rewrite of the regs is not a highly competitive, uh, project for this grant.
What, what types of things get, get the grants?
Um, they, they have, uh, high, they give priority points, not a lot, but some, for projects that meet their sort of statewide priorities for this year. Uh, they have five of them, I think, this year, so projects that further affordable housing, um, projects that help, uh, um...
Water quality?
Yes, water quality is one, that's, that's one.
Could you, if that a document that you could share with us?
Yeah, yeah, I can email you the...
Terms of our thinking of...
Yeah, absolutely, I'll email the, the specifications on that.
Village stormwater...
Part of the reason that we haven't gotten it is that I think we've had projects that stretched, you know, what they, what they typically fund, um, I thought stretched them in a really good way. The other part is that it's very competitive, there's not enough money for all the communities that are applying, and Chitting County in particular has a lot of planning horsepower, meaning there's a lot of people out writing grants. So, um, I've been told not to be discouraged that we haven't gotten money in the last several years, but, um, because of the competitiveness, but it does speak to the need to finding a project that A, we're, we want to work on, but B, sort of fits the, the criteria.
Do you have any sense as to whether or not they, uh, try to distribute grants to various towns, so that we haven't gotten one for several years?
Yeah.
Which us maybe in a better position?
Yeah, I think that, I think that's...
Where we get to pick higher in the, in the draft.
But I think the language, I was reading the grant criteria today, I believe what it says is that, um, in the, in the event of, of projects that sort of score equal number of points, preference will be given to communities that haven't received a grant recently. So it's sort of a, only in the case of a tie does it go to the community in need, not necessarily is it something we get points for.
Good to know.
Yep, we had a good track record of getting this grant, um, you know, almost every year, um, first, for several years, uh, early on when I started, but, um, maybe my grant-writing skills have gone down the tube or something, but we haven't been successful lately. So anyways, know that, I'll email that out, good suggestion, John. And the other two items that I wanted to add, that I emailed you but didn't show up on the agenda, just a notice that the Williston Planning Commission is holding a hearing on their town plan update for August twenty-first. I, I haven't read their update, but I read sort of the pencil sketch of what they're changing, it doesn't seem like there's anything that's contrary to what, you know, Heinsburg's doing along our common border, so I, I don't think there's a whole lot of problems there. There may be interesting learning opportunities by looking at it, so take a look at it if you're interested. And, um, I also emailed you out the advance notice we got fr, about this, um, uh, pending application to the Public Utility Commission for, uh, an improvement near the Vermont Electric Substation on the corner of, um, Pond Brook Road and Richmond Road, so there's an existing substation there, people probably familiar with that, sits next to a wetland, um, and they're proposing through a third party, uh, Northern Power Systems, uh, a pretty small additional area for a battery storage, um, facility where they would be able to store energy, I assume, it would probably be related to the solar, um, array right up the hill on McGee Hill Road, but, um, they talk about all the details in what I sent you, and the crux of it is, they're required to notify us forty-five days before they submit an application to the PUC. And you are empowered to make comments directly to the applicant, and if you do, they have to address them in their application to the PUC. So, um, we, the town will have another crack at this, once they formally submit an application, we could become parties and make comments and go through the formal legalistic process, but this advance notice gives you the opportunity to, to sort of say what you need to say without having to enter into that and see if the applicant, you know, bites on it. And we've done this to some extent with other projects in the past with, with good success, I thought. In this case, after doing a drive-by today and looking at it myself, I don't think there's some issue to be even, to be worried about, but, you know, you can go take a look if you'd like, go drive up there and see it, the, the maps are in the, the Dropbox link that they sent, um, if you have trouble with those, let me know. Did anybody look at it, does anybody have any concerns immediately?
Well, I was just wondering how large, as you say, there's some...
Yeah, so it's...
A good-sized wetland thing.
Building that holds the batteries?
It's not a structure, it's, it's like a pad...
It's a rack.
Um, with a couple of racks in it, um, but here, I can bring it up.
Well, originally they were negotiating with someone to rent some space on their land and a building that I knew of, like a garage.
So here's the...
But that all fell through.
Here's the site, I think everybody knows where it is, but there's Richmond Road, and there's Pond Brook, and there's the site. And then if we go to the next map, here's the site plan. So, uh, here's Richmond Road here, here's Pond Brook Road at the bottom, this is the existing substation, and this is the existing access drive that goes to the substation. There's another existing access drive here, like, that climbs a pretty steep hill, um, and they're proposing to tuck it right, right in here. And it's a, Barb, you asked how big it was, that's what it looks like on the ground, but I think the dimensions are described in the, um, in the letter, if I can bring that up. Uh, let's see here. Nope, that's not it. Seventy-five feet by fifty-five feet fenced compound. So, when we look at this map, this site plan, this is seventy-five feet by fifty-five feet, and within it, they're going to have, uh, I'll zoom in a little bit so you can read what that says, in the battery storage facility, um, it does refer to an enclosure, so maybe that is more of a structure than Ralph and I were saying, but, uh, two enclosures for the batteries, I think they described them in the documents, actually, if you want to read about it, and then a pad with... and then a pad with, you know, those utility box things, inverter and such.
They must be cutting that ink out.
So when I walked it today, you know, this, like I said, this is fairly steep, and I was kind of concerned that they were going to be, you know, on that side slope, but there is a, there is sort of a perched area right in there, so I don't know.
Foot difference between this lower corner and that upper corner. If you look at the contours there, 770 and 780.
Yep.
That's 10 feet.
So I would encourage you to go look at it, so you can get a better sense of what it is on the ground. It's easy to walk into because it's right off the road.
Yep.
But that was my only thought as well, is that it's, it's outside of the wetland areas, it's not in the deer-wintering area that's nearby. It's, in terms of our primary and secondary resources, the only one that it impacts is the moderately steep slopes of 15 to 25 percent.
I was wondering why they need so much room around the holes.
Yeah, I don't know. But that was my thought. If there's only, if there's any issue, it might be that, you know, there's going to be a fair amount of fill that comes in if this has to be level and.
Cut and fill.
Cut and fill, yeah, and how are they going to deal with that?
How are they going to change the contours to deal with the cut on the upside?
But even if they do that, as, as long as they deal with erosion control properly, who cares? It's not a, it's not impacting anything, and it's right next to an existing substation in a pretty under, you know, unutilized area of town, so I.
The people that live across, diagonally across that intersection are the only ones who are going to see it on a regular basis.
Everybody who drives on the road will see it.
Right. Everybody who drives fast.
Probably till the trees grow up again, because now it's pretty not noticeable what they have there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that we, we do have these new provisions in our zoning regulations about screening requirements, and so it, it probably would make sense to comment, actually, now I'm thinking about it, just to point, direct their attention to those and say, this is great, we love renewable energy and battery storage to support that, but, you know, we expect there to be some screening. And I, I, to be honest with you, I read through all this, I don't remember to what extent they describe the landscaping that they're proposing.
Their drawings don't show it.
Their drawing definitely does not show it, but it may be described in the, in the narrative.
Is this associated with the guys who ended up getting the power out of McGee Hill Road? Is it that power company?
You know, John, I don't know.
It's not Green Mountain Power.
So it's Vermont Electric Co-op.
Vermont Electric Co-op.
And so, yeah, it is associated with Vermont Electric Co-op.
I know, a different company.
But the third-party here is Northern Power Systems, and I don't know if that's the same company that ended up taking over the solar panels. It's all wrapped into VEC though. It's all wrapped into Vermont Electric Co-op.
It's for their system.
Yeah. So with that in mind, you're helping me think about this, so thank you. Maybe I'll just draft some comments for you to look at at your next meeting on the screening issue, and then if you could go look at it in between, then we could just wrap it up at that meeting and you could tell me what else to put in it.
Give them our comments.
Yeah. I had forgotten that, that we did, we had all that new screening language, and we should, we should be directing applicants to that every time they come.
I might be interested too in what the actual, I should just read the thing you said.
The written description.
The enclosure. I mean, Northern Power, we worked with them on a project we did. We put some of these battery backups, we have a solar installation on the roof of the building, and it's just a rack outside. It's not enclosed, and it helps, you know, with peak loads.
Right, leveling things out.
Sort of offsets that in a good way.
Maybe it has to do with this being more accessible to the public. It's not on the roof of a building, and they want to protect it.
I thought I heard them, or heard, read that there's some level of climate control.
Required?
For these. So they may be in an enclosure so that they can regulate the temperature, but it's, it is described in the narrative. Just take a look at it.
Batteries don't like to get cold. They prefer to be warm.
Well, they're heavy as the dickens, so they like.
Oh, I know about that. I'm not putting mine replacements on the third floor anymore. They're going on the bottom floor, where I can drive right up to them.
So.
That's all I have.
Since we're talking about power, it looks pretty much 100% that Green Mountain Power is bringing three-phase down our way.
Yeah, I heard that from Tim Casey a week or so or two ago.
What does he say?
He said the same thing. He called and said, I want you to know that it looks like Green Mountain Power is definitely bringing it down, and they're negotiating with him about being able to utilize his generators.
They are doing that. That's good. So they've told us that it's astronomical for us. We're going to have to hire a consultant because it's very costly.
For you to access it?
Mm-hmm. Well, we want it underground, and it's, they said maybe there would be $40,000 to $70,000 available for us to do some of that, but also, I heard tonight at the supper table that we won't, it won't be accessible after 5:00 at night at peak times, which was a surprise.
Yeah, I think.
I don't know that, that will affect, that that's a problem for us at this point, but.
You're not operating at that time of day.
No, we aren't, actually. So, but it's just a lot to can, talk about and consider for us.
Yeah.
So I think we're going to hire a consultant to help us.
But it's a real positive thing. It's been in our town plan for days, I think.
I think it is. Yeah, yeah. Well, that's why I mentioned.
Dennis, you, you did some work on that and found some numbers and.
But Tim was acting like he was not interested at all, so that's changed since the last I heard.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to speak for Tim. I just had a single phone conversation, but he seemed positive about it, and, you know, we mentioned, I reiterated the fact that, you know, over the years, the planning commission has mentioned that the Industrial One District is underutilized and that, that elk farm south of, though, would make interesting industrial park. We always thought three-phase power was one of the, one of the keys to making that possible.
And he does have huge generators that, that's what I had heard originally, was that when they visited us the first time recent, in the last two or three years, that they would access some of his power when he's not using it, which would be after 5:00. So I don't, it's just, yeah.
Cool.
We'll see.
What is it actually like, I'm not that well-versed in this, what does it actually facilitate in addition, just more load?
Well, right now, we, yeah, right now, we, to run almost all of the machinery that runs our sawmill and our planters, we have to generate our own power, which uses fuel oil.
In other words, the single, the single strand of electrical line doesn't carry enough juice to power that, that kind of heavy load.
It stops at the golf course right now.
Same with the, with the, with the sand and gravel operation there. Machinery is too, requires too much load or electricity for, for the lines that are there, but once it's three-phase power, it's got way more, carries way more and.
Okay.
But it could cost more too for us. We don't know, you know? I don't, it's a lot of things to think about, but we're excited. I mean, it's for the better good of the community, for sure, I think.
Yeah, well, hopefully your consultant can help you run some cost analysis to see what your payback period would be, right? So if we make this investment, how many years do we need to operate before we see a payback? Because we're no longer buying diesel fuel and having to keep a generator up and all that kind of stuff.
And it's definitely better for the environment.
You want to switch your question over to 480?
I'm just saying that the renovated town laundromat is wonderful.
Second? All right. Thanks, everybody.